The person that is chosen and the price that is disclosed or the salary that is disposed and they don't like the F end on it, it would be considered too low.
So then we would negotiate with the next person in line, candidate number two.
Okay. Just like a contract thing. So is this person gonna, does this board want this person to have a contract then?
No, I think it'd be like all other departments, we have to stay at will.
Okay.
All right. You start dealing contracts, you start doing buyouts, you start dealing with letting people go.
Is there any further discussion?
All right. All in favor of the motion on the floor, please say the five of us saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you.
That was long.
Yes.
I said aye.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right, we here to reach for a second vote in comment section. Ms. Cannon.
Mr. Cannon, I would like to make a statement here as to this agenda on page four of it. I hope it means to say special exception instead of extension. The public feel, okay?
That is a typo, sorry. I didn't type it. Ms. Tony.
Okay, I wore my advertisement. I want you all to see this Saturday, the thirty-ninth annual Wild Hound canoe race. And it's at the same location. All the fun's gonna start somewhere between ten and eleven. And so far, I hear we have ninety applicants, which, or entrance, I should say, which is the highest number that we've ever had. So, and if, all you do, bring your folding chair and get yourself some food and just sit down and enjoy. The second thing I want to say is Thursday morning at eight o'clock, the Atlantic Coastline Caboose that is located on County Road three twenty-six will be moved to the Wild Hound canoe property. We will have two large cranes. Sims Crane out of Ocala is bringing a seventy-five ton crane to lift the cab. And Mark Nussel from Williston, Williston Crane, will have a fifty-ton to move the trucks, which are the wheels. I've learned a lot through this process, trust me. And then Larry Roberts from Roberts Trucking, Trucking out of Williston, is gonna move the two elements. We have the track all set up. We've been working on it for the last several days with cross ties and track ballast and rails and tie downs and you name it. And so, once we get it there, we're gonna start refurbishing it. And we'd like to turn it into a Levy County welcome sign. So come on out on Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else with a comment? All right. Mr. Sheriff, oh, Chevy.
Thought you were gonna get away, you didn't. It's, uh, like to encourage everybody to go to the Wild Hound race. It's certainly the community oriented thing to do. But if you've got a little lower morals like myself, we're having an event at the Dixie County Airport because there is only so many weekends in a year. And I'd like to invite everybody to it. And we've got several aerobatic performers coming in. We're gonna do a couple of shows during the day. One in the morning, one about one o'clock in the afternoon. The airplane rides and helicopter rides. We're gonna have a car show. Various businesses and vendors are signed up, about fifty of them. It's a free event. And, uh, come early in the morning and the wind's not blowing and you haven't had enough hot air yet today, there's gonna be hot air balloon rides.
Man, she knows the little Laurel standards.
Anyway, we're just trying to promote the local area. It's not, it's a nonprofit. Trust me, there's no profit involved. Just like, uh, everybody in the tri-county area, come out and have a good time. And just, quick note, went to one at the Williston Airport last weekend and that is not the airport that I used to fly at in the seventies anymore. It's quite a facility down there. Thank you.
Are you going to, you flying the helicopter you had?
It's gonna be on display. I wasn't being too busy that day to do much flying myself.
All right. If you're using this thing, uh, it looks like a toy.
It is a toy.
Mr. Sheriff, what you got for us?
Just like to take a couple of minutes and produce some more hot air.
He put it on the line, didn't he?
I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize our nine-one-one telecommunications dispatchers. This week is National Telecommunicators Week, you know, every week of the year now, it's something special. This is real special because these are special, very special employees and folks and they're the first of the first responders in my opinion ninety, ninety percent of the time. So, you know, this week we're honoring them and just wanted to take a moment to recognize them with the commission and with our citizens. We've had the opportunity recently, and I spoke a couple of times on this, that they're now emergency medical, emergency fire certified dispatchers as well as your nine-one-one and law enforcement dispatchers. We've had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to honor last month in our semi-annual awards time to award two of our dispatchers, one with a lifesaving award and one with a sheriff's award. The lifesaving award was awarded to Ashley Dean for following the EMD protocol and providing CPR instructions to a family member that administered that CPR to their father. That gentleman, through the efforts of our dispatcher and the family member that was administering that, and of course our paramedics and EMTs that arrived. He survived and bars, I know, still alive today. Secondly, Nikki Burbak, another one of my dispatch supervisors, she also had the opportunity to deliver a baby, a father, en route to the hospital with his wife. And she was able to give instructions for that father to help and assist in the delivery of their child. So I was able to do that and that is some of the results that we're having from now, being fully certified as emergency medical, emergency fire dispatch. Still a learning process. We still have a half dozen or so dispatchers that are less than a year of experience and it's a learning process for them to follow that protocol and to keep our citizens that are calling in, in an emergency situation as calm as possible and for them to extract that kind of information so they can relay that to our paramedics and EMTs that are en route as well as our fire personnel en route. And that's, that's where I'm gonna end is, I've said this in a couple of meetings that I've spoke at recently to civic groups, but I want our citizens to understand that this is new. It's historical that we have EMD and EFD certifications and dispatching now. That process requires those dispatchers to go through a protocol. They do their very best and I encourage them. I listen to a lot of nine-one-one tapes, especially when I get, when Ms. Tony calls me or when I get citizen complaints. I listen to those tapes and they're trying to reassure whoever's on that phone calling in with that emergency that I'm listening, I'm taking your information and within thirty seconds to a minute, they're dispatching. They're on a computer. We have the, just like, you know, the EMTs have, we have computer aided, mobile computer aided dispatches. They're taking that information, they're typing and putting that information out to the deputy and so that deputy can get en route. But at the same time, they're gonna continue to follow our protocol and they're trying to keep a person on the phone and it's frustrating because you're in an emergency situation as a citizen in the public trying to get someone help. So just I want the public to realize that, that that is a new process and just to bear with us and to understand that help is coming almost immediately. You know, plus they've got a backup dispatcher there that's doing some of the radio transmissions or assisting. As soon as we get an address, we verify that address, that's going into a computer and somebody's gonna be en route to you at that point in time. So those are things I'm proud of and I'll just add that to it as we celebrate National Telecommunicators Week. They are the first in line and then get the rest of us rolling to help for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Ain't no mention I capped off both of you last week. Y'all gonna get a warning up for that.
What did you do?
Never mind.
And after what you said, that job's probably the most stressful of, of all the first responder jobs. I mean, you know, it's, you know.
Extremely.
Because they're all on the people.
Yeah, they're twelve hours a day, each shift, just like, you know, you paramedics and they're twelve hours a day in that dispatch center. You know, twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-six days this year at least. It's a rough job.
Ms. Cannon.
Not pertaining to the ship.
So I might leave.
You get off. Permission, you can sit down now.
I forgot to say something early.
Well, I guess you'll come back in two weeks.
That's all right too. But since I'm still here and you are kind enough to hear me. And we have the, recently, the crew has not been able to be at these meetings, I assume, for whatever reason. So I would like to ask Mr. Ship for our eighty thousand dollar renovation of this commission. What happened to the television that was at one time giving us the programs, especially to those in attendance, Mr. Ship, that do not show up on a regular basis? Can you please tell us what the problem is?
For the TVs?
Yes. Why your crew, your employees does not can, is engaged?
The agenda on?
Yes. And others. And other things like which was discussed, Mr. Hammond, for example, those situations.
That's up to each individual that wants to come here and put that program on.
And what about the agenda?
The agenda? I can have it put back on.
But that would be appreciated.
Okay.
Did you show up?
I told you.
The masks.
And then the reason that I don't show up sometimes is I've got other things?
I think I do like that.
I had jury the last, uh, day y'all had.
Mayor of England, City of Town, y'all got anything good, bad, and different?
The South Levy Market Place is this Saturday. And we'll have organic fresh, organic produce, arts and crafts. Hopefully we'll have some fish. It depends on the weather, whether or not they can get out for the fresh food. It starts at nine AM and runs till one.
Steve, you can go there first and then come on up the road to the Wild Hound.
Exactly.
And then if you're feeling really dirty, you can go on up there to the area.
He said it, not me. Nineteen is the route.
What about, uh, tell us a little bit about the award y'all received at the, at the city, Lady Cities meeting?
Uh, well, we were both awarded Home Rule Heroes for twenty sixteen for going in front of the legislator, legislators while we did this past session and promoting all kinds of home rule.
Business is youth in Little Williston. Although we did have a B seventeen fly in the other day, which was kind of neat.
I saw that picture.
That was pretty cool.
B seventeen G.
Told you that's what it was.
They used to be there, is that correct?
No, sir.
Has that never been there?
No.
Twenty-fives.
We've got B twenty-fives for what we're on that base in the second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other elected officials? Commissioner reports? No. That's what I'm gonna do now. Commissioner reports.
Do we have any more Saturdays, this Saturday?
There's only one, man.
We've got to have some more.
There's plenty of Little League going on. If you don't have nothing else, you can go watch some Little League ball, I'm sure.
New race we got the FFA Q, White Earth Law, Saturday. Now that's all we have to be volunteers go. Any sharp now over that day, we FFA two, call the clay didn't want us to have, have, you got to get nineteen or nineteen over to do it because they have that lot here. Uh, what's up, Mel? Is that, oh, anybody know? I, I think so was family, but it's Cody Daniels and Ashley, half more down, light of the Moxon. We went out there to help them and all. Y'all got any suggestions, those people, every thing? Ma'am?
We, um, the board members of the Gulf County Wild Hound new race spoke yesterday about the possibility of having a fundraiser at the property.
Thanks, David, appreciate it.
To, uh, to help out, have food and a van and, you know, ask people for donations.
Yeah.
So that'll be in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. Uh, I don't think so, I can't, yeah.
Okay. Well, no, you can ask for another agenda item, I just. Motion to hear non-agenda item in a second. All in favor, please say the five of us saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Morning, please.
Good morning.
My name is William Framley. I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of Cedar Key. Since July of fifteen, I've been working on a dredge under that Little Bridge Valley to open up to port, to boat traffic. I've got every approval under the sun except one that I need from you. And that is to provide a map clearly indicating the location of the dredge disposal site. Spoiled materials must be deposited on a self-contained upland spoil site which will prevent the escape of spoiled materials into the waters of the state, which the City of Cedar Key cannot provide because we don't, we're not upland.
You're Ohio.
We are. And I understand that you folks have a site off of three forty-seventh and where that would accommodate the need. According to the, the Army Corps of Engineers, we fall under a category if we apply for under two thousand cubic yards. According to an extensive survey of CMM dredging, it's gonna be approximately a hundred and forty-five, but the geo tubes will actually determine the volume unless they're filled. So I applied for under two thousand, which is the same category as one forty-five. However, if I applied for one forty-five, if it went to one seventy-seven, I would be violation. So what we're asking for is permission to use your site and basically nothing else. We don't need help with anything. They're all part of their own well. But my permanent application expires a week from tomorrow.
That's why we had to have this expedited.
This site is at Eight Mile Hill.
Eight Mile Hill, okay.
And that's the same location that in two thousand and four it was, that we did, we did dredging and allowed you to put these spoils out there.
Okay.
Now, let me ask you about the testing of the sample.
Thus far, the EPA, State DOT, and the Army Corps of Engineers have all looked at it. Nobody's asked for a sample because they see it simply as sand. However, if someone does ask for a sample, the City of Cedar Key will pick up the tab and have that served.
Okay, so the testing and stuff.
I don't think there's anyone gonna ask for a test, but they did come and look at it. The, the State Department of Transportation does readings and from the previous readings and one a month ago, we have accumulated two feet on the Gulf side of the bridge and eighteen inches on the Marina side of that bridge. The bridge is forty-five feet in length, but they're going to allow us ten feet in either direction, that was in the corner of, and the state will only allow us to take eighteen inches because of their upcoming bridge work. They don't want us to undermine anything that we jeopardize their work because they won't fix a bridge if it doesn't work. Correct. So, you know, just asking for eighteen inches, six feet in width, fifty-five feet.
Make a motion to, for you, please.
We have a motion, go ahead, say it. I'll say that. Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Tony.
Is there an alternate site for the dumping to cover what happened the last time? You remember we offered it before in two thousand and four? Turned out that it was not acceptable because the testing was, there was something about the testing of the materials that came out of the basin. That was when the Cedar Key, City of Cedar Key dredged the, the boat basin.
There was some arsenic.
Yes. So is there an alternate location or are you just gonna go ahead and dump it at Eight Mile Hill?
Well, whether it'll be in containers and mine containers.
Okay, okay.
And if it does test positive, it has to be treated.
Correct. And Cedar Key's gonna take care of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I hope that's on the record.
Do you want to amend your motion to reflect that, the Cedar Key would test this oil?
No.
Motion has been amended, say it. It stands. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say the five of us saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Anything else to say? Mr. Stevens? Commissioner Rockmeeks?
Ball, pursuit AAA, there won't be any this weekend.
Oh.
So if you're gonna go watch Little League, go to Rock.
Okay. That's all we got. I'll be in for new best.
All right. Mr. Gilbert.
Mr. Chairman, why haven't you asked Commissioner Gilbert to announce the Calhoun's meeting this Thursday night?
What, sir? I couldn't hear anything. What'd you say?
Calvin's meeting.
No, that's right, I'm sorry. Calvin meeting, uh, uh, who's, which is out.
Which is on the river.
Yeah. Lincoln County Calvin's located, I mean, thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
All right. Anybody else? All right, y'all get going. I need to hear, a motion to hear a non-agenda item regarding the City of Williston. I have a motion by Ms. Rooks, you gonna say it? Say it by Commissioner Rockmeeks, all in favor, say the five of us saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I received a letter on Friday afternoon, said, "Good afternoon, find me a cash letter requesting to waive our tipping fees for the City of Williston during its August, April twenty-third cleanup day event. We appreciate your help in giving this to the commission as appropriate individuals." So, here is the letter. And unfortunately, much like the application or the, the work being done at Cedar Key, time is of the essence. So we need to discuss and decide whether or not we're going to waive tipping fees. I think historically we have always done that to help communities or they do a community cleanup, but we couldn't wait and bring this back because it would be after the advertised date, April twenty-third. So, what's the pledge of the law?
Then, the county has always helped. When you love your government, I'll make a motion to help the City of Williston with this.
I'll say that.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
When did, when did the city decide that they, y'all was gonna do this?
I don't remember exactly when it was. It was, it was a fairly, fairly recent. We had to arrange it with the, you know, the carrier, the carter or whatever.
Nice person doing a four yard?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, we've got some organizations that are gonna help out, but they're gonna carry it all off, I think.
Whenever I received this notification, I did ask Jessica to play the reminder, Ms. Francis, the agenda item would be by Wednesday. I think this was kind of a last minute thing, so, anyway, anytime we can help out municipalities, that's a good idea. So we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say the five of us saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Received a letter from the Town of Bronson thanking us for the donation of an old ambulance chassis from the road department. Hopefully they can utilize it for their fire department, I think is what the ultimate goal is, that's where I sell the park, so they can have liberties with that. I-75 Task Force, I attended I-75 Task Force meeting last Wednesday to kind of get y'all up to date. There is some information in the office. I will be providing it, putting it into your, into your mailboxes. My intention is we're to have it done this morning, we ran out of time, but we need to discuss where we're at. And I don't wanna do that today. I wanted everybody to have a fair amount of time to think about it, to look at the maps, to, you know, have a chance to ask any questions of DOT, talk to your constituents. It's, it's a pretty big deal. There was three routes proposed by DOT. One of them was the southernmost route would have taken the traffic where it's currently going to end, where the Veterans Expressway or Suncoast Parkway, whatever you prefer to call it, terminates and is, will terminate in the state road forty-four between Embarness and Crystal River. The goal is to get from there to I-75. Their southernmost route would have went almost to west and dumped the traffic on I-75 south of Ocala. Questions were raised, is why was this even a plan? Because it was probably the most idiotic plan ever because the portion of I-75 they're trying to relieve would have just added more traffic to it. So a motion by, by myself to kill that plan was passed unanimously. But there are two other routes. One route comes out between Gainesville and Ocala, which is a questionable route in itself, but there are some numbers from DOT that they presented to us to support traffic counts north of Gainesville, in Gainesville, south of Gainesville, that show that, that it would actually provide some relief. And then the third route, the northernish route, would come out north of Gainesville, just south of Latre. That is the one that's gonna have a direct physical impact on Levy County. That is the one that we ran the road through our county. That brings good and that brings bad. Obviously the good is, is any transportation corridor is always gonna be good to stimulate the economy. The bad is it's gonna get upset the way of life that some of us know and appreciate in, in the eastern part of the county, because that's where it's gonna go through. So, I, I just, like I said, I, I'm so, I apologize for not having this for you this morning. You wouldn't have had time to really look at it before the meeting anyway. You will have it in the next day or two so that you can make an informed decision at the next meeting as to whether or not we want to support a resolution to send a DOT that we support the expansion of the Suncoast Parkway or we don't support. That's where we're at. as to whether or not we want to support a resolution to send the DOT that we support the expansion of the Suncoast Parkway, or we don't support. That's where we're at. If anybody has any questions, I'm answering as best I can. You know, my, my, my personal opinion is, is it can be a very good thing for Leaning County. But, I'm just one person, I am representative on that board, but I am, I, I will take any input of y'all as to what, what we need to do. So, uh, I'd like to have that discussion at the next meeting, so it'll be on the agenda, and then we'll go forward from there, follow meeting, and have Ms. Amy craft a resolution, one way or the other. Cause I don't think she's gonna be here at the next meeting, so, so we would, so we'd be May fifth, and then it'd be May nineteenth. Ms. Cannon?
Mr. Sherman, has the I seventy-five task force set a time for the Leaning County meeting?
Yes, ma'am, it is going to be, we're, April, May, it's gonna be the June meetings will be in Williston Crossing. It's gonna be our, our meeting. And the public is invited. They also have other meetings that, that I don't attend, that are, are meetings for, uh, staff level meetings, that don't involve, uh, some, involves DOT and, and, and different, various county departments that would be affected planning, I think. I have not had a chance to attend one of those meetings, but they are in conjunction, they're usually a day or two before, a day or two after.
And when do they have the final meeting before, Sean, I put the, more precisely? If the old six counties have had their meeting, then what happens?
If, we will send a recommendation to Secretary Foxhole at DOT as to what the, what the findings are of this group. And this is non-binding in any way, we could all say, yes, we want this road, and DOT go, meh, we don't think we wanna do it. So it, it's just a, an advisory council role, is what we're, what we're performing.
And so who has the last word, you know, DOT?
Secretary of Transportation. So, and there's some, you know, there's a lot of discussion, and it's going a lot of different directions, as to whether or not, could we just take the roads that we have, existing, and, and increase capacity on those? You know, the consensus from the DOT engineers and those sort of folks is, no, you can't, that you need a new road, anyway. Uh, I just wanted to bring that up in the, in the public, so that y'all have an idea what's coming, what's gonna appear at our next meeting. Mr. Litten?
Mr. Meeks, uh, could you please, uh, uh, make sure that the City of Williston gets a copy of that information?
Yes, sir.
Because I'd like to get that before our council-
Okay.
Pretty quickly, if we can.
Well, um, again, it's kind of in the preliminary stages, I mean, but, yes, sir.
I, I realize.
Public record, anything that you want, and you can actually go on the-
Is it on the website?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and one of my, one of my concerns is, is the route, the proposed route, um, you know, is gonna go between Williston and Bronson, and how does that affect Leaning's airport?
Exactly.
Um, so, but that's, that's all, that's all been taken into consideration as far as places where roads can be built. And that's the concern with the northernmost route, the route that goes through Leaning County, is once you get to I seventy-five, this way continues on to the ultimate terminus in Jacksonville, is you can't get through Camp Laney. So how does that affect things, so? Anyways, I just, again, I wanted, I wanted y'all to be aware, that is all with that, so. And I think that's all I have. Anybody else have anything?
Where?
Mr. Chairman?
Chair, you got something? Are you going to be asking the commission to pick the route that they prefer?
No, I'm just gonna ask them whether or not they want, we want to support the building of this road, or not. Centrus County is, is voting at their next meeting on whether or not to pass a resolution in support of expanding the Suncoast Parkway. So I, I think we need to make our, our mind whether or not we want to support one or, or not.
Is that final in those three roads you're talking about, that's pretty much final?
That, if they're gonna build a road, that is final, there's still the recommendation to just increase capacity on existing roads, but the southernmost route has been eliminated. It is no longer on the table.
There's two.
There's two. Mr. Shepherd?
I was just wondering where we could get a look at a proposed map?
Um, they're on the website.
Okay.
Uh, or you can stop by the office, uh, we keep all the books from, from the meetings in Willer's office, because Willer's attended a meeting that I couldn't attend, and so we kind of keep it all together.
Appreciate it.
Alright. Does anybody else have anything that's come before this board?
Yeah.
Say nothing?
You gotta pay the bill.
Oh, whoa, 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 we're in recess, we gotta pay bills, too. Minutes from, uh, March twenty-second. To, uh, prudent minutes, the mission is, conditions are, okay. Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, uh, motion to pay the bills. Motion to pay the bills by Commissioner Stevens, say it by Commissioner Rock Meeks. All in favor, please see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and we will stand in recess until the special exception comes in, or the exception needs. Six thirty, we're excited for doing the report, we're gonna do it.